All right, ladies and gentlemen, I call to order the Clackamas County Commission's Business Meeting this December 18th. Just so you know, this is our last official business meeting before the end of the calendar year. I'll ask Mr. Krupp to take the role.
Yes, well, happy holidays and merry Christmas, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. Of course, we are joined here this evening by County Council, Stephen Madcor, and also Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. I'm going to start the roll call for the Housing Authority. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the other states of America and to the republic which stands.
For nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Well, I'll announce, so Martha knows, that we have a distinct echo from Great Britain, and it was her. Oh, well.
Chair, where I said the Pledge of Allegiance, just FYI.
You're a true patriot.
Did a real good job of it, too. I will announce that the Board will first convene as the Housing Authority Board for this first item. I'd like to introduce our Housing Authority Commission Member, Paul Reynolds, to my left, and he'll be participating in this portion only of the agenda. So, Mr. Krupp. Oh, wait, I don't need you. I'll ask the Clerk to read the Housing Authority Consent Agenda by Title.
The Housing Authority Consent Agenda. In the matter of writing off uncollectible accounts for the second quarter of fiscal year 2015 and Resolution Number 1908, award of 21 projects, project-based vouchers, and $1,300,000 in public housing disposition proceeds.
Do any of the Commissioners wish to remove any item? I'll ask Commissioner Reynolds for the motion.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second.
So, a motion made by Commissioner Reynolds, second one by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the Clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes 6-0. I want to thank you, Commissioner Reynolds, and excuse you for your great work here tonight. I'll announce the Board will adjourn as the Housing Authority Board and convene as the Board of County Commissioners for the remainder of the meeting. We have a presentation, Mr. Krupp. Yes, Mr. Chair. Of course, we have an award-winning Clackamas County Government Channel, and we have a presentation on the awards we've earned for 2014. I'm going to invite Mr. Garrett Teague with our Public and Governmental Affairs Department to present that to you.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. Good evening, Chair and all you Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here to talk about Clackamas County's award-winning cable programming. As you know, I'm not sure how many people know out here, that we do have an award-winning cable program, winning over 240 awards since 1996, and this year was no different. We have a brief video presentation highlighting this year's awardees and the producers that helped make it happen. I apologize, sometimes I speak too quickly.
You should have kept talking.
Yes.
We're talking about video, and we have failed miserably here. Since 1996, the Clackamas County Government Channel has been producing compelling documentaries, reporting on community events, and broadcasting local government meetings. 2014 has been an incredible year for the Clackamas County Government Channel. Eight unique productions received 13 acknowledgements by the Videographer Awards and NTOA, the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors. This year's awards go out to Oregon House District 38 Selection Meeting, receiving a second-place honor in the NTOA Public and Community Meetings category with lead producer Mark Ivanisch, camera operators Darren Averman and Nicole Kuhn, and audio operators Chris Miller and Allison Grayson. This local government meeting was a major undertaking for the channel. The multicamera event was captured and fully edited for next-day broadcast. Law Enforcement Marine Academy, produced by Richard Butler, received third place in the NTOA Public Safety category. This program takes a look at the rigorous training our law enforcement receives in order to provide better public safety on and around our waterways. Also taking a third-place NTOA award was the Event Program Production Sea Wet Water Celebration 2013, produced by Ryan Garras. The video highlighted this special event about water and watershed education and conservation. The March of the Ferry, produced by Allison Grayson and Chris Miller, received a NTOA Honorable Mention Award in the Documentary Event Coverage category. This short documentary covers the transport of the Canby Ferry through the locks on the Malamute River for the ferry's much-needed maintenance. A Videographer Award and NTOA Honorable Mention was given in the Safety and Public Service Announcement categories for producer Chris Miller's Window Safety. With help from the Clackamas County Fire Department, this PSA provides valuable information on how to keep kids safe around windows. The Stage Coaches of Clackamas County, with research and interviews by John Terry, videography, editing, and graphics by Terry Musgrove, and narrated by Mike Donahue, received numerous NTOA awards, including first place in editing, second place in audio and sound recording, third place for visual arts, an honorable mention in the documentary category, and an award of distinction from the Videographer Awards in the Creative Video Production and Editing category. This is a fascinating documentary about the role stage coaches played in our local history. The Videographer Awards gave an honorable mention to producer Melody Ashford and writer/narrator Bill Cooper's PSA, Cancer Screaming, in the Medical External category. The PSA communicates the value of early cancer screening and detection. And in the Government category, A Cleaner Clackamas River, by producer Nicole Kuhn, received an Award of Excellence from the Videographer Awards. Property owners and law enforcement discussed the benefits they have seen from the county's enforcement of the alcohol ban at Barton and Carver Parks in Clackamas County. Congratulations to all of the Clackamas County Government Channel staff and producers on another outstanding year of television.
There you go. Any further comments?
No, Chair, none. Thank you again for your continued support, and thanks to the staff and producers for all they do.
The Video Department is very important to help disseminate the information from our departments, their important work, but specifically also the work the Commission does. I think they've done an outstanding job, and I think the Commissioners share in that opinion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Garrett.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
It is time for citizens' communication, and in deference to a lot of times when things we read Oregonian accounts where a bunch of people are going to show up and they're going to question and/or advise us on any issue, I thought appropriate that specifically on this particular issue that a lot of people signed up for, that we invite our manager of planning, Mr. Mike McAllister, here initially, because surprisingly, because of the same article that I speak of, he's had some recent communication, i.e. today, that might be of interest to you. So, I'll ask Mr. McAllister to come forward and tell us a little bit about both process and where we're at currently.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow, and Commissioners, and happy holidays. So, this is in regards, it's just an update in regards to the Evangelical Retreat Center property, and there's been some ongoing activity on the property in regards to pre-application conferences and conversations with a potential developer on the site. And just briefly, the county held a pre-application conference with the developer last fall, I believe it was September, to discuss the proposal, some general design concepts, approval criteria and process and fees for a development of this nature. And generally, what was being considered or contemplated at that time was a subdivision of the property and also a potential zone change to a higher density. Subsequent to that meeting, there was also, I attended a CPO meeting at the Jennings Lodge, and there was a, the Jennings Lodge CPO asked that I attend and provide some information, primarily about the process for reviewing these types of application, how it's handled, how notice is provided, what sort of criteria are used to evaluate the application. And then there was another meeting after that, I believe it was in October, in which the developer and his consultants met with the Jennings Lodge CPO Board members to kind of identify issues of concern, potential alternatives. I also attended that meeting, mostly to listen and facilitate where I could. At this time, there, no application has been submitted to the county. And I did get a phone call from the developer's consultant today to kind of give me an updated, inquire about the article in the newspaper. And the information I got today was that the developer and their consultants are still in an information gathering stage. They're looking and re-looking at some environmental conditions on the property, slopes on the property, whether there's any sort of other geotechnical studies required. I believe there's been a tree survey done, and sort of just still gathering information in terms of, to consider what kind of proposal might be brought forth before the county. And I understand that from the consultant, that they anticipate having some other design concept in place sometime in January, probably latter part of January, in which he indicated that they would be checking back with the county, giving feedback on that, and then also presenting that to the CPO and communities if they're interested in that. So, that's where it's at today. I want to, you know, let you know that the nature of this application is, if it's a zone change and a subdivision application, it does not come before the Board of County Commissioners. The application would be reviewed through a public hearing by a county hearings officer. That process will provide, you know, neighbors and CPOs and other interested property owners a sort of a chance to review the proposal, provide comments on it, testify at the hearing, come up with other suggestions or design alternatives that can be considered in that review process. Ultimately, the hearings officer makes the final decision at the county level. Along the way, I think it's important to know that the evaluation of this application, like all development applications, they are subject to the standards and the zoning development ordinance. And those standards and zoning development ordinance do a couple of things. They provide guidance to how the property can be developed, densities, where roads go, how you deal with public facilities and services. They also provide guidance for things like protection of natural features, trees, dealing with storm drainage impacts to the road system, and other public facilities. So, the ZDO is, if you will, the guiding document for how this will be, the property can ultimately be developed. During the pre-application conference and in other conversations I've had with the developer and the CPO and other community members, I've encouraged a good dialogue between everybody involved in this, to be sort of a respectful, thoughtful dialogue, and community and solution-based, how to get the best design of the property, and I encourage people to continue to do that.
Commissioner Savis.
Just want to just clarify, Mike, that until an application is actually submitted, our abilities to request anything, or influence anything, or request a tree plan or anything is very limited until the application is actually submitted. And as of this date, as you mentioned earlier, there hasn't been any application.
That's correct. And then, of course, in the pre-application conference, we do talk about things that are necessary supplemental requirements, traffic studies, in this case, there will need to be a sort of a tree inventory and all those sort of things. But we don't have anything more to respond to until we get either sort of another proposal from the applicant that might be considered through a subsequent pre-application conference or through the formal application process.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, it seems to me that this is the time to influence before they spend a lot of time and money on this project. One thing that I think would be a good idea is that there are some historic buildings on there, even though they're not historically registered. And one of the things that we did when Milwaukee High School expanded was the property owner offered those buildings up for a dollar if somebody wanted to, you know, move them somewhere. There was an old church in Milwaukee that was moved near Clackamas Park, and so, you know, that might be something that you would recommend that the developer consider offering a, you know, certain timeframe and at a, you know, the cost of moving the building.
Thank you, Mr. McAllister. You know, these kind of things will generate, I think, you know, questions, concerns, explanations from the Commissioners. So, I expect that after people testify, that we will have more questions or need of clarification. So, I may call you up after that, as the Commissioners express their concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to call you up in twos and put a two on deck, and I'll start with those who are specifically designated that they want to talk about, you know, Jennings Lodge, let's just call it that area particularly. So, the first two I'm calling up is Tom Weaver and Carol Masternade. On deck would be Terry Gibson and Jeff Bornfeld.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. I have these comments that I had drawn up before.
I know people, you're supposed to give your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Carol Mastard. I'm Chair of the Jennings Lodge CPO, and I live on Meldrum Avenue in Jennings Lodge. The citizens of urban, unincorporated Clackamas County are concerned we are losing our tree canopy. Large specimen trees or growths of trees are more often cut than not if they stand in the way of, quote, "development," unquote. As a representative of the residents of Jennings Lodge, I'm expressing their wish to preserve these old-growth trees as a priority rather than as an afterthought. The topic of one of our recent CPO meetings was, quote, "the character of Jennings Lodge," unquote. The majority of responses included big trees. I expect these same results would occur in Oak Grove or Clackamas CPO areas as well. The ZDOs have very limited safeguards for existing trees once an application is submitted. There is one small paragraph in ZDO Section 1002.03B addressing excessive tree removal. The language is ambiguous, specifically the word feasible, which I've described under footnote number one, so it is usually interpreted in favor of developers. We are left with no trees if they stand in the way of a developer's plan. The alarm in the Jennings Lodge Lodge community regarding the proposed clear-cutting of most of the old-growth Douglas firs on the Evangelical Conference grounds has been universal and should be addressed by our governing body, you, the BCC. As you know, we're not incorporated. We have no governing body except for you, so we have to depend on you to help us, whereas if we were in the city, we'd depend on a city council or a mayor. The suggestions made by the community, if considered and implemented by planning department staff and the developer, could result in an attractive subdivision with open space, many trees preserved, and a much more positive attitude in the community about the whole project. We are working on alternate plans with emphasis on saving trees and the character of the conference grounds, and hope to have some concrete ideas to present soon. There are sections of Clackamas County's comprehensive plan and the metro plan which support our hope that preservation of trees will become a high priority. With that in mind, we ask that you endorse our efforts to communicate with the planning staff to address the preservation of trees in general, but especially on the Evangelical Conference grounds. We have a problem of conflict between money, the developers', and livability, ours'. We'd like to see our livability take priority over their money this time.
Thank you, Carol. And just a note for everybody, everybody that knows this, watches the Commission meeting or come here, that I'm really very, very liberal in regards to exceeding three minutes. Carol, I know through your letter, you submitted more information to us. I appreciate you sticking to the three minutes very much, and I'll just ask people to do the same thing, because we do have a lot of cards besides this issue up here tonight. Yes, sir, thank you.
My name is Tom Weaver. I reside at 4815 Southeast Meldrum Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow Commissioners. Happy holidays to you and yours. A recent survey of Jennings Lodge residents found that the R10, 10,000 square foot, minimum lot size is sacred to the people who reside there. It is intended to provide for a much lower density than what has been referred to in the pre-application submitted by Lennar Homes for the proposed development of the Evangelical Camp in Jennings Lodge. To permit a developer to reduce a lot size from 10,000 square foot to 6,500 square foot to build 73 homes clearly violates the original intent of R10 zoning for the sake of creating a higher density than what would normally be allowed. In the most recent election, ballot measure 26160 passed by a huge majority. It extended a 12-year-old law that prohibits metro mandated density increases in single-family neighborhoods for an additional 16 years. It leaves decisions about, decisions about the number of homes in single-family neighborhoods to local cities and counties. This proposed high-density development of 73 sites by Lennar Homes in Jennings Lodge completely ignores the original intent of R10 zoning and would result in the clear-cutting of hundreds of towering Douglas firs that are near or over 100 years old. The scenic landscape and history of this property defines much of the unique, of the unique character of Jennings Lodge and serves to help provide the tranquility our suburban community has enjoyed over a great many years, spanning multiple generations of families. Most residents in Jennings Lodge realize this property will be developed someday. The only thing they ask for is responsible development that respects the integrity of our, of our community. Requiring strict adherence to the original intent of R10 zoning provides for a lower density of homes, saves a huge number of trees, years of treasured history that are currently associated with this property. Constructing a higher-end home plotted in a manner that disturbs fewer trees on a 10,000 square foot lot could generate nearly the same property tax revenue for Clackamas County, provide a handsome profit for the developer, save numerous trees in history, the intent of R10, and the, and the character of our community. This afternoon, only after the developer heard we were coming to the BCC meeting tonight, they sent us an email saying they would arrange a meeting with our organization to discuss the proposal with the community. While we do appreciate that effort, there is no mention of when this meeting might take place. In the meantime...
Well, go ahead.
In the meantime, we have been developing alternative, alternative designs in an effort to achieve the best development design for all parties, which preserves the primary growths of historic trees and the original intent of R10 zoning. Thomas Jefferson said, "It is more honorable to repair a wrong than to persist in it." We are here tonight to ask your assistance in helping our community establish a meaningful and constructive dialogue with Lennar Home representatives in an attempt to perhaps create less contentious middle-ground solutions over that which is contained in the pre-application. Prior to the filing of a formal application for development, we are also asking that in the event a pending formal application for this development becomes a contested land use case, that any subsequent appeal on this matter be heard by the BCC versus a hearings officer.
Okay, that, I let you go a long, long ways on it. You've got to really...
I've got one more sentence.
Okay.
Because I may not always testify on this matter tonight, I respectfully ask for permission, Mr. Chair, in the interest of time saved, to forego protocol and allow those from our community or who are here in support of this testimony, be allowed to stand.
That's not a problem. Go ahead. And so, we're ready for the next two, and that's Terry Gibson and Jeff Bornfeld. And on deck will be Chip Janger and, hmm, looks like Pat Russell. Newhart, Newhart? I think you're hoping.
Renard.
Russell.
Renard.
Renard, got the wrong one, didn't you?
Renard.
Okay, go ahead, gentlemen.
He's here, too.
Good evening. My name is Terry Gibson, speaking to you this evening as President of the Oak Lodge Sanitary District. After having a similar showing of concern regarding the Jennings Lodge Retreat Center at its own September Board meeting, the Sanitary Board directed staff to review our most recent Surface Water Management Code. Our code was recently rewritten, completely rewritten, with the input of a stakeholder advisory group that was drawn from within and without of the district. It included such diverse representatives as the North Clackamas Urban Watersheds Council and the Portland Metropolitan Home Builders Association, per district policy. Just this week, OLSD staff reminded us that pursuant to Chapter 6.3.0501, a developer has the optional strategy to reduce pervious surface amount by saving existing trees. According to Planning and Development Manager Karen Streeter, I quote, "Developers get stormwater credit towards volume reduction for stormwater impacts by calculating the credit of existing trees." While Clackamas County's weak tree regulations still leave much to be desired, I recall a consensus approval of this new code from the Stakeholder Advisory Board, and the OLSD Board unanimously approved the code. My point is that should Lennar and AKS worked, wish to work with the Jennings Lodge community and the local district stormwater authority, the mechanism is already in place to take the opportunity to save every significant tree on the evangelical property. I'm going to repeat that. The mechanism is already in place to take the opportunity to save every significant tree on the campus of the evangelical property. Not only would a development of this nature win international acclaim, it would also actually enhance the neighborhood and move the Jennings Lodge and Oak Grove area further up the top 10 list of places to retire to, according to Forbes Magazine. I think Clackamas County should strive for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Bornfeld, and I've lived in Jennings Lodge for the last 23 years, and I, I've noticed and read a fair amount that Jennings Lodge and our whole area is an underserved area by the Parks Department, and I noticed that. We don't have the same kind of parks that other parts of the county have, and I feel neglected in that regard. We are primarily an R10 neighborhood, and I live on an R10 lot, and I have many large trees on my lot, and so do most of my neighbors, and it gives a very nice environment, and that is a big attractor why we came to Jennings Lodge in the first place. But I also want to speak to the fact that the issue of water runoff, since we get a fair amount of rain, I'm glad that he spoke to that, so I will let that go, but that the point of it is, trees and other things keep it, whereas pavement and houses don't. It all ends up in the, in their system. So, I'm concerned about the proposed drawing that I saw that shows a clear cut, that to put in 73 houses, to take it from being R10 and shrink it down loses what we have. I live across the street from Paradise on Boardman, I live on Boardman, but across Paradise, and you see that tract of houses that was built many years ago. They don't have any big trees in there. There is not, in all of these years, that has not recovered the trees that were taken out. You know what I'm talking about? You know where I'm talking about? Paradise off, okay, there are no trees there, and that was built 30, 40 years ago, and they just don't come back, not the size of trees we have now. The other is, I noticed in that drawing, it showed if there was a park, it would be on the backside, on the river road side of the park, leaving all of the beautiful big trees, the ones that are along the ridge, gone. So, the last thing I want to say is that I did a little looking, and Lennar, very notable building company, and I think, I'm happy that people make a lot of money building. But then when I look at the differences between what some executives make and the rest of us make, Stuart Miller is the CEO of Lennar, and he makes $22.5 million a year. So, I want to look at whether them squeezing more money out of this particular piece of property at the expense of the trees, the people who live there, the potential of having a nice park for us, is really the direction that our county wants to go. Is excessive income more important than the quality of life that we need to live with? Thank you.
Thank you. Chips Jager, and I'm sorry, it looks like Gat Reinhardt, but I'm not sure.
Pat.
Pat? Okay.
Okay, my name is Pat Reinert, and I live on Jennings Avenue. In an area called Jennings Lodge, there is a place...
Can you pull that microphone down towards yourself a little bit so we can hear you well? Thank you.
In an area...
No, closer.
You have to pull it towards you then, or we'll scoot up. We want to be able to hear you.
In an area called Jennings Lodge, there is a place known to many residents as a quiet place, a place of refuge, a sanctuary. It is cloaked within many trees, trees that have been around for many years. People know the value of trees. They have many properties. They enhance air quality and water quality. They reduce noise pollution. They protect the environment and wildlife. They provide windbreaks, and there is mounting evidence that they enhance our physical and psychological health. People also know the value of trees from the standpoint that they can be cut down for cash. Trees have pecuniary value, thus making way for development and more cash for the people and the entities involved. It seems that our decision here is one of sanctuary versus pecuniary value. Why is it that planning and development is determined largely by such factors as sewer capacity and traffic? On the scale of evaluation, why isn't more importance given to the quality of life? Future generations will remember and applaud those making a correct decision for trees, their retention as much as possible, especially on the west side of the evangelical property. Future generations won't have a clue about an irrevocable decision made for cash. They will have a little less air quality and water quality and more noise pollution. They won't remember the people making the decision, and they certainly won't remember the trees. They may remember the sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, happy holidays to you all. I hope you have a wonderful one. When I moved into this area a little more than 10 years ago... Oh, my name, excuse me, is Chips Janger, sorry. I live on Fair Oaks Avenue in Oak Grove. When I moved into this community a little more than 10 years ago, one of the things that I heard about was that the character of the community, particularly in the neighborhoods, was changing. And I'd heard a lot of talk that this was because Metro had insisted that density moved into our community, they had to increase density, and therefore, our neighborhoods were being impacted by development. I found that interesting, but I wanted to try to understand why this was happening, and I spent a lot of time reading about it and talking to people. Eventually, got ahold of the President of Metro and had a conversation with him, because I really wanted to know why they were doing this, because some of the properties in my community, in my neighborhood, the oaks had been cut down. What I discovered from him, and he came out and spoke to a group of people in my community, was that that was not at all their intention. Their intention was they had a mandate that if, when population increases in this community, they had to find where, where would the population go? And their idea was that it should go into the corridors, not into the neighborhoods. They insisted very strongly that it shouldn't go into the neighborhoods. And yet, that was happening. When a developer came into my neighborhood and cut down on a lot, all of the oaks that were there, all of the oaks, and built three houses that could have been built in Dubuque, Iowa, had nothing to do with where we were living, because they were just standard houses, I had a conversation with him, and I asked him why. What would, why would they do that? And he told me that they did that because the numbers worked here, because it was easier to do things in Clackamas County than it was in Washington County, which is where he was from. They couldn't do the same thing there. I don't know how this works. All I know is that we don't have any recourse except for you guys. I heard all of you, when you were coming into office, talking about how you wanted to preserve the quality of the neighborhoods, and that, to me, was wonderful. That's what we wanted to hear, because that's why we're here. But we need help, because as Planning Director McAllister said, ultimately, these things are in the hands of a hearing officer, and even though I'm not an expert and haven't been around for a long time, I've never heard a hearings officer basically turn down developer, what developer wanted. I've heard it maybe sent back and then brought back again. But we're asking you to help us, because you're our only recourse in the unincorporated area, to help us preserve the character of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Mindy Hill and Pat Russell, please, followed by Koi Rita Tolenen.
My name's Mindy Hill, and I live on Willamette Drive, directly behind where this subject development's supposed to take place. And anyways, my house has already had water in the basement and garage and all that, and I don't know if anybody's been down Willamette Drive. It's a single street. The residents that live along there, we had to privately pay to have that paved. We had to privately pay to put in a berm to already stop a water problem. So, my main concern with this whole deal is erosion, and if these trees are cut down and the old buildings are removed, it's a hillside slope right into a bunch of homes. And I just feel that should be addressed, to protect the existing homes first, and that they put some kind of a... Lennar needs to mitigate the water so it doesn't come down and do further damage. Like I say, we already have a water problem down there. I mean, it's happened in my home, and I'm directly behind it. There's a large conference building there. It's right above my house. There's old tree roots, all those large trees on the ridge that people are talking about. If that's removed, it's going to be a serious problem. So, that's my main concern, along with everything else with the extra traffic and other problems that I know are going to happen around there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Good morning, good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Pat Russell, and I reside at 15989 Southeast Bilquist Circle in unincorporated Milwaukee, a few doors south of Bilquist Elementary School. Over the last 15 years, as a member of the North Clackamas Citizens Association CPO, and now part of the Clackamas CPO, I have participated in many discussions among my neighbors and members of other North County urban CPOs. I have been hearing many concerns about lack of adequate development standards. My planning area is generally south of Harmony Road, which is the aquatic center area, and Sunny Brook, to the homes south of Strawberry Lane in Gladstone, and west from I-205 to Oakfield Ridge, homes in the Aldercrest-Westwood neighborhood. Our larger CPO, since we merged, extends to the Carver Junction, including Sunrise Corridor and the Clackamas Industrial Sanctuary. Some of the concerns of our CPO have included general lack of subarea plans designed to protect, enhance, and sustain our established neighborhoods and coordinate capital improvement needs, county's effort to straighten arterials through homes like the Roots Road, Webster-Jennings Road corridor from I-205 to Gladstone, up zoning land in the R-10 neighborhoods to R-7.5 or R-8,000, to increase subdivision lot yield among established homes on 10,000 square foot lots, speculative zoning of properties near I-205 and the Milwaukee Expressway from residential to commercial, lack of developer meetings with neighborhoods before submitting applications, lack of project compromise to address stated neighborhood impacts and design concerns, county requirement to maximize density yields not required by Metro, regardless of terrain or site conditions, literal code interpretations by decision-makers favoring the applicant where discretion is explicit, unnecessary removal of mature native trees, building homes on unstable clay slopes identified by LiDAR photography, building wetlands and floodplains, neighbors unable to appeal planning decisions to the Board of Commissioners, those we elect to represent us, loss of salmon once plied Kellogg and Mount Scott Creeks, and failure on the county's part to develop a federally mandated sand recovery plan for these creeks. I encourage you to take more time to hear our concerns and act on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Koi Rita Tolenen.
Is that Jennings, too?
Is it? Pardon? Is that Jennings? Yeah, I think, yes. There she comes.
Are the beast for last. I'm Koi Tolenen, and I reside at 4406 Southeast Hull Avenue, Jennings Lodge. I put before you two choices, mature majestic trees or the almighty dollar. God and time create the trees, but anyone can print a dollar, which becomes more worthless every day. You as county commissioners are faced with two choices. You could be known as men and women of vision, who see the big picture and protect our old trees and create an environment where people can live and thrive with nature, or you can become just nameless, faceless politicians in a long line of hogs at the trough. People choose to live in Jennings Lodge because of the quality of life. The large trees and the spacious lots provide the privacy and the serenity that we seek. I chose my home over 40 years ago for the neighborhood and the lot, not the house. We are a community that care for each other, and we respect our neighbors. It's a good community to rear children and grow old. Many of our children have moved back to this neighborhood to rear their own children in the same nurturing environment. However, now, we are faced with profiteers coming into Jennings Lodge only with profit in mind, asking, and we are asking you as elected officials to work with us to protect not only the livability, but the identity of our neighborhood. The type of development just does not fit or enhance our neighborhood. We were promised a park and a community center years ago. We have been paying taxes for such a facility. When finally, a piece of property becomes available that would fulfill this promise with little effort, and the state was willing to work with the county, the Clackamas Parks District and the state was snubbed, or the Clackamas Parks District and the county snubbed the state. Martha Schrader seemed to be the only one at that time that could see the large picture and the potential for this property as a park. It would draw people from other areas. It would enhance business district. It could also bring in money as a venue for such things as weddings and reunions. And there are buildings on there that could be used for little theater and community orchestries and more cultural activities that our schools are no longer providing. There are other areas nearby that are more suited for this type of development as without the negative impact on our environment. Jennings Lodge doesn't have the storm sewer to accommodate this. We do not have adequate sidewalks or lighting. It's just a poor fit all the way around. I've been researching what amenities other city planners now feel are needed to plan a successful development. Portland, as well as other cities and county, have now realized that the high-density areas such as Jennings Lodge just don't work well. They've realized too late that they had destroyed neighborhoods with dense developments that did not function well. I would suggest that you look at the open area in Milwaukee for this type of development. Movement nowadays seems to be away from homeownership in single-family homes. Fewer people will be driving cars. People want to walk to libraries, restaurants...
I want to be fair with you, but I've limited everybody else. You've given us a three-page letter that you're intending to read in the record...
Okay. It doesn't fit. Start being creative and being responsible. This type of development, it serves to be in an area like where your light rail ends. You put that fiasco there, now let's make it pay for itself and work well. Let's put this development in that open area in Milwaukee. They've got libraries, they've got all the facilities you need. And if you look at Vancouver, it looks so much better than Oregon. And the reason is because these kind of developments, they have to save large growth old trees, they have to plant barriers and save the trees and the shrubs. This, you know, you say that the planners are the ones that make the decision. That is just a bunch of crap.
It's not the planners, ma'am. It's not the planners. It is a hearings officer. It's a hearings officer hired by the county to do...
I understand that. I used to appear before them a lot. But the tree ordinance...
You have to end this.
The tree ordinance that you people gutted sits in your lap.
I didn't do that. You know, I appreciate being chastised when we're wrong, but first of all, I had nothing to do with light rail. I had nothing to do...
I understand that.
Do I get to finish here one of these times? I had nothing to do, nor the majority of these commissioners up here, with gutting any tree ordinance. So, I appreciate the accusations, and certainly, we inherit with this office a lot of what was done in the past. We accept that. And as Mr. McAllister has pointed out in the next review of our five-year audit of the ZDO, trees will be in that, and you'll be able to all give testimony in that regard.
And our trees will be gone by then. And by the way, Tudy Smith, Melrose Park is in Gladstone, and the North Clackamas Park District, I really appreciate that they worked on the ball field, but that isn't in Jennings Lodge.
Thank you very much. So, Mr. McAllister, I know this has generated a couple of questions from the commissioners. Would you please come up one more time so we may ask questions of clarification? Commissioner, I'm looking at this, my magic board here, and it says Schrader, so Commissioner says, I apologize.
Seating arrangement has changed today.
It has, indeed.
Mike, something I heard, I hear often, and that is that, you know, people say, or the county staff is saying, you know, the density is imposed by Metro, and Metro says, oh, no, we don't do that, hands off, we don't require that. And yet, you know, I understand that cities have been, and you can verify this, whether this is true or not, I've also heard that cities and counties have been taking the task for not implementing those regulations when they are directed that way. And so, with regard to probably the common, probably the most common thing, and this is something that, I live in this community, these folks are my neighbors, basically. for not implementing those regulations when they are directed that way. And so with regard to probably the common, probably the most common thing, and this is something that, I live in this community, these folks are my neighbors, basically, and I share the concern about density. It's something I'm not in love with myself, and I'd like to see these neighborhoods preserved. But, I mean, does the county have the liberty of saying, you know what? We want to keep the existing zoning the way it is in this area?
The zoning out there now is R-10, which is a 10,000 square foot lot size. And in the county's adopted conference of plan, there are policies that guide whether or not a zone change can be proved to a higher density. And those are what are used to guide a zone change application. It's a number of factors. It looks at physical characteristics of the site, slopes, soils, et cetera. It looks at the adequacy and availability of public facilities and sewers and the road system. It looks at the location of the property, considers the location of the property to commercial centers and those sort of things. So there's some plan policies that guide that. Could the county, for example, amend those policies and/or just not allow zone changes in certain areas of the county? Yeah, we could do that. We could preserve the R-10 zoning, but it would require amendments to our conference of plan and those sort of things to do that.
Would we suffer any consequences for doing that from other governments in the state?
I don't think so, because our existing R-10 zoning is acknowledged, and our housing and building inventories have been based on that density.
Well, I'd certainly like to see us retain the existing zoning, the entire area between south of Milwaukee and north of Gladstone.
And that's something that we could potentially entertain.[700.00][700.00](applause).
Commissioner Smith.
I have several questions, and it has to do with process. Now, if this developer wants a zone change, he must go before the hearings officer, right?
That's correct.
What if he wants to build it just with the 10,000 square foot lots? Is he still required to go before a hearings officer for whatever purpose?
Yes.
Okay, what would that be?
For review of the subdivision. So it would be looking at the design standards and the street layouts and those sort of things.
Okay. And then what is the county's position on the application? Would you or your staff be required to tell the hearings officer, well, we support everything but the 7,500 square foot lots? Could you make that recommendation to the hearings officer?
Correct. Any application for a zone change or subdivision, that the staff, part of the process is the staff evaluates the proposal, we evaluate through all the approval criteria, the conference of plan policies, and we provide a staff report to the hearings officer that includes a recommendation.
So what criteria would you have to use to tell the hearings officer, we want to maintain the 10,000 square foot lot?
We would use policies in our conference of plan now that I just described to evaluate that.
Okay.
And based on those, we may find that the existing zoning is adequate or not. That would be part of our recommendation.
And then my last question, because we had a lot of people come up and say, and demand as county commissioners, we intervene in this process. Has there ever been a time when this commission in the past has intervened in this type of process?
Well, I hesitate to say at any time, because I.
Maybe Mr. Magcor would.
But there is not an authority in the zoning development or in the conference of plan for the Board of County Commissioners to hear a development application like this. The only things that come before this board is if it involves conference of plan amendments, we actually changing the plan designation, specific types of all main applications like mining proposals and legislative amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Okay. Well, this has been very interesting. I hope the folks listened, and we'll do what we can.
Commissioner Bernard.
So I'd have to agree with Paul that, you know, I think our goal should be to retain as much as possible the 10,000 foot. One of the things that, you know, I think, I lived in Villebois. I think our lot was like 3,500.
Yeah.
It took me three seconds to mow my lawn. You know, it's great when you don't want to be outside, but it's not much good when you do. And recently I moved until six acres, and I think it saved my life. Having a yard like that, you know, that 10,000 foot, you know, one thing that I think they discovered in Villebois is that when you save the trees, the value goes up. And a lot of communities.[921.13][921.13](applause). A lot of communities have been trying to save more and more trees. But one of my problems is that when we looked at a tree ordinance, this was the beginning of the downfall of the prior county commission. There's two things you don't deal with: children, pets, and property rights. And it was a nasty, nasty process. And, you know, we had everyone, you know, claiming that we were taking away their property rights, even imagining it. And so, you know, when I was mayor, the first thing I did is we did not look at a tree ordinance, because I knew exactly that problem. And when we got down to the end of voting on the tree ordinance, I voted no, because it wasn't strong enough. By then, it was worthless. And, but, that's what all those people came to tell us, except, and some were afraid to be here. It was just a nasty, nasty process. So, you know, I, it'd be great if we had a tree ordinance that respected property rights, but, you know, the other thing that I just heard tonight is, well, give it to Milwaukee. Talk about NIMBY. I mean, my goodness. So, you know, force Milwaukee to take the density, and heck with us. And that's pretty amazing. But, you know, I just hope that because of how the trees have great value and increase the value of a home, and the fact that if they cut down some, and they don't do it right, the others will fall. So it's something that has to be done very carefully. And preserving, especially on the side where the west side, where the hillside is, I think it's important that that be considered. And the water flow issue's huge. A lot of projects up on Mount Scott, for example, my sister lived up there, they had a river flowing under their house. They had to figure out how to divert the river every time it rained. So I hope we'll take a look at those standards, too.
Mr. McAllister, when you talk about a 10,000 square foot lot, is that net, or is that inclusive of the roadways?
The way density's calculated is you basically look at the gross site area, and you take out certain things like a certain percentage of the road. I think it's up to 15% of the new roads. You subtract things like slopes over a certain percentage, things like that, and so you come to a net acreage in that instance, and then that's what you divide by the 10,000.
So the actual lot that somebody ends up owning is 10,000 square foot?
The average, the average size of the lot has to be 10,000. In the zoning development ordinance, there are standards for what are referred to as flexible lot sizes. And those allow lots in an underlying zoning district like the 10,000 to be reduced to 80%, I believe, of the size. So you can have some lots that are smaller than 10,000 and some that are, and basically some have to be larger, so they're average. And that flexible lot size provision is used almost exclusively in all our subdivision applications. And what that does is it provides flexibility for the design, for, so that all your lots aren't cookie cutter lots. It provides flexibility in where you put your streets, sometimes in saving trees, building envelopes, moving around environmental areas. So it is a common tool, and it's used in almost all our subdivisions.
Okay.
This, tonight, has been called a high-density subdivision. Now, folks, Metro, they know high density, and the previous chair of this commission had in her mind that aspirationally, any new properties in UGB should be 30 units per acre. Now that is high density. Would you call, now let's go down to 7,500 square foot, so would you call that a high-density subdivision?
Those zoning districts under our comp plan are all recognized as low-density residential districts. We have what are called medium-density residential districts. Those are 12 units per acre. And then our high-density start at 18 units per acre and go up to an unlimited number. These, all our single-family, seven, eight, 10,000 square foot are all considered low-density in our comprehensive plan.
I'll finish my questions after Commissioner Sabas again.
So I just want to remind, and for some of the folks in the audience who maybe don't know this, is that back when MAP-1, which is the McLaughlin Area Plan One, which I chaired and a number of people, I think some of the people around this room attended some of those meetings as well, and actually sat on the group. But of the guiding principles, the vision and value statement that came out of that, preserving the neighborhoods and the densities was something that we heard along with the trees and the creeks and all the things that I think these people are advocating for. And, you know, right now, that plan or preserving neighborhoods is just sitting there idle on the shelf, and I think it's something that we could take a look at and kind of move. And it's really about, do we really, I mean, we got asked by Metro and others, you know, what's the community aspirations? And the aspirations are clear. They're established. They're in writing. And preserving the neighborhoods and the densities, I think, is something that we heard often, and I'd like to see it changed.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Schrader.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, I've been listening to this conversation, and I certainly think that if there's an opportunity to maintain the density as it stands now, that might be something that we seriously look at. It seems to me that we seem to be working towards a consensus, and I would suggest that we keep that in mind as we move forward with this. I'm very familiar with that property. I've been there many times, and I think the extent of the community involvement here is pretty significant, and I applaud the people that are coming forward to do this and to talk to us about this particular issue. And I just wanted to let you know, it's 3:00 a.m. here in Great Britain, but I am avidly listening to this conversation and wanted to attend because of this very issue.
Thank you, Martha. We're going to let you off the hook here hopefully soon, so you can go night-night.
No worries. No worries. I'm wide awake with my tea.[1354.04][1354.04](laughing).
Mr. McAllister, under what situation, I will tell you that this commission at least has been reticent about accepting appeals. Under what conditions or situations are requests made for this body to reconsider, let's call it that, any decision made by the hearings officer? So specifically, are all subdivisions subject to a request to a higher body, and is that higher body us? And specifically also, is it, does it also apply to where there's a zone change? Are they mutually exclusive?
So the only land use applications that can be appealed or considered by the board beyond conference of plan amendments, beyond the things that are otherwise required to come before you, are what are referred to as interpretations. And in the zoning development ordinance, there's some authority for a property owner or resident to ask what the ZDO, certain provisions of the ZDO mean or the conference of plan means, to interpret the language in those documents. And interpretation is something that is initially processed by the planning director where a decision is made and appealed to the hearings officer. And those interpretations, if you will, the decision by the hearings officer is the final decision of the county, except that that type of application, the applicant can request that the Board of County Commissioners hear that on appeal. And the board has the authority to hear or not hear. They can decide not to hear it. In that instance, it goes up to Luba like all other land use applications.
So, you had said that it's, you didn't say zone changes, you said.
Interpretations.
Interpretations.
Zone changes are, the final decision is by the county hearings officer. There's no authority for it to proceed to the board, for the board to consider it.
All right. So the, I assume that stormwater mitigation is definitely something that is addressed by not only staff but certainly the applicant. Is that correct on any subdivision?
Yes, that's true. And in this case, the property's in Oak Lodge Sanitary District, so the stormwater and sewer are subject to that district's regulations. We coordinate with them through the development review process.
And Mr. Russell's number seven, it says, county requirement to, this is something we're guilty of, I guess, county requirement to maximize density yields not required by Metro, regardless of terrain or site conditions. Is that correct?
In any development application, subdivision, partition for new homes, actually, commercial industrial development, the zoning ordinance includes a number of standards that regulate development on slopes, steep areas where we have geologic hazards identified, et cetera. Does it preclude from those areas? Not necessarily. But it does consider an evaluation, and in some cases it requires geotechnical reports, some cases it requires a higher level of building construction, et cetera.
So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, I mean, for example, if somebody came into this property and said, I want to create 15,000 square foot lots, would it be the county's position to say, listen, we want to maximize yields here? We want you to develop at a 10,000 square foot lot basis?
County would not do that, no.
Would not do that.
The applicant could propose to do that.
So we're not requiring, we do not require that anybody maximize. Is that correct?
There is a, there is a minimum density requirement. So in any given zoning district, I don't have the zoning ordinance, I believe it's 90%, but in any given zoning district, if you do a development, a residence, single-family residential development, you're required to develop that to a minimum density. Like it's 90% of what the density, the total density is. However, what, the development needs to be designed to show that you can do that, or you need to demonstrate that you aren't prohibiting that from doing by the way the lots are being designed.
Now, the 90% was created by whom?
That might be a metro requirement, but I would have to look. I think that's a metro requirement.
We don't exceed that and say, we want you to develop even more than what metro mandates as a minimum.
That's correct.
Okay. You know, I want to speak to the fact that somehow we snubbed state money for a park. It never happened. Certainly Representative Barton was involved, we're well aware of that, and said, I will help you apply for money and get in line with others to possibly get some money that didn't come near what developing any kind of park would cost. Now, the NCPRD, it was mentioned before, but not specifically who they are, it's the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District. This is within their area. Commissioner Sabas has been very adamant all along for the two years I've been here that this is a grossly underserved area. So he's been stalwart in that claim. We put out, the NCPRD Board of Directors, a question to voters recently, would you, would you spend an additional 35 cents, and would you like to have self-governance? That was turned down. When we discussed this, I'll just tell you, in executive session, we found that we had no money. There was no servicing money for the debt that would be created for a new park at this property. Now, it's not to say that somewhere out there in the great forever, there might be grants or additional money, and I think Commissioner Schrader discussed that with us at the time, that, you know, a group should be applying for and asking for grants or monies that would help establish a park in that area. I'm not saying whether it's on this particular property or not. But we, as a commission, are aware that this is an underserved area, and we will address that hopefully at the beginning part of this next year by either deciding again to go out for self-governance at a lot less dollar ask, or I should say penny ask, but they had, those pennies add up, or not. And I'm sure that you can be engaged in that conversation. I'm a real estate broker. I was for 37 years. I don't do much business now, because I've got plenty to do. But I, believe me, am aware of the value of trees and the value it does for other, what value it gives to properties when they go to sell, value when people drive through neighborhoods and say, I really like these trees, no matter who owned them. They liked them. On other people's properties, on common properties, on the streetscape, people really dig trees. But I'm also a private property rights advocate. And, you know, you say to this church, this evangelical group who has served this community well, sure, they haven't paid many taxes, if any, on that property. We'd love to see it back on the tax rolls, but they have served this community well. And now, when they want to do something with the property, people come forward and say, no. "No, you know, we want to take your private property rights away from you and limit what you can do to the property." I hardly recommend that people become and stay involved, and this is a great group that showed up here tonight, in the process as it comes down, if it ever does, and there's still an if out there about that. So I, I would like to recognize again Commissioner Savas.
I just want to make one clarification with regard to the park and ways to finance it, and that was, one of the things that we had the option of, which we had done in the past, and I understand the reluctance of the board to do that today, that's a, that requires three votes to happen, but, and that was, the idea, again, utilized before of loaning the NCPRD the money from the county. So the county's one entity, the park system is another entity, one loans money to the other. Now, we did that to the tune of over $5 million in the recent past, so, and I understand that the board's not interested in doing that again, however, that was an option of acquiring this property. I felt.
The only thing, and Paul's right, there was five, this is before we got here, but there was $5 million passed over for the north, for the Milwaukee Ballpark and also for the Happy Valley Park. Unfortunately, those weren't loans, they were couched as gifts, unbeknownst to some people on this commission. And, you know, it's always great to loan money, but again, having been in real estate, we usually have a payment plan set up, an amortization, if you will. Take the money, take the time you want to give the loan, and give me an interest rate, and that'd be great. Therein lies the problem, NCPRD does not have the money to service said loan. And I don't think a gift, I think the commission's been fairly resolute in making it abundantly clear, no more gifts, you know, loans are loans, and if you're able to service, debt service the thing, that's even better. We will continue to be at the forefront with the NCPRD, trying to figure out how we can better serve the clients who pay the money into that district, and that, as I said, will come up at the beginning of next year. Commissioners, do you have any more questions of Mr. McAllister?
No.
Chair Ludlow, if I could just make a final comment? Thank you. First of all, I would be happy to sort of facilitate any continued dialogue in the future. I've tried to be available, you know, in terms of the developer and the CPO and the community, if they want me there. Secondly, take the opportunity that, as you know, we are in the third year of a complete audit of the zoning and development ordinance, and, and we are moving into that pretty quickly right now, and the sort of second phase of our year three will include a look at our development standards in the zoning and development ordinance. Those include some of our design standards, some of our density standards, and you could consider looking at tree standards, you could look in at slopes, and all those sort of things. So there's an opportunity forthcoming in the review of that audit. It will be probably a spring before it gets to the planning commission and later before the Board of County Commissioners. We have already engaged in our outreach, three CPOs and sort of regional meetings, we're going to three more right after the first part of the year. And so I'm encouraging people to sort of know that's coming and participate, engage it, an opportunity to look at our design standards, our development standards, and to change those accordingly.
You know, coincidental with the, the contact you had today, and it was on their volition that they contacted you, the developer, I think that's great. But I think what I heard here today, and especially in the written testimony, is it would be nice if, and, you know, again, going back to my past as a real estate developer, real estate broker, but certainly I'd help people with developments, is the first thing we did, the first thing we did was go out and we engaged with the community, saw what their tolerance level was and where their support level was, and so if you could encourage that same developer to contact these people and open a continuous dialogue with them, I think it might turn out much better for them. Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, and, you know, reaching out to the community, I'm sure there's something between 65 and 10,000 that, that might pencil out, but, you know, one of the problems, like when we interviewed the hearings officer, is that one of our goals is getting to yes. But, you know, when I talked to him, I said, "Yeah, it's getting to yes some of the time." So, I mean, there, but some, we often don't have input on when that some of the time is, and when it isn't. And I guess this is the opportunity tonight to, to give you some, some direction without demanding that you follow that, but, but suggesting that it might be best that the developer consider what's best for the community rather than what's best for that major salary.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that word, profit. I coined one of my favorite old phrases is that, and they should be, the developer should be engaged with these people because when you're not at the table, you're probably on the menu. So thank you for that, Mr. McAllister. And I'll call up the other two people here to testify not on this issue, and then, of course, Les Poole, he kind of puts his two cents worth in about several things. Les Poole and Nancy Hall.
Today Metro held another meeting. These folks need to be talking to Metro and they need to be showing up at Metro meetings. You've heard me, week after week, month after month, talk about Metro and Trimet. I never would have dreamed, 10 years ago, that a planning agency and a, and a transportation district would encompass so much of my time. But as someone that owns property, and someone that has a lot of experience that's similar to Chair Ludlow's, I've witnessed and been involved in so many things like this, and there's, there's a bigger issue here, and I'm not going to talk about Jennings Lodge per se. Tonight I wanted to talk about the growth boundary and density, and where it comes from. I hope folks will sometime take a quick look at ORS 268. That's the statute that gave Metro this authority to regionally plan transportation and regionally, regionally plan and quite frankly, force density on communities. If I have a community in Damascus where we don't hear much accountability for what Metro's done there, they decided there'd be 70,000 people there. So how were the planners in Damascus going to find room for 70,000 people? Well, they were going to have to preserve some open space in parks, they were going to have to save a little bit for single-family, but for the most part, they were going to have to create incredibly high density. So Metro is mandating density. Metro is the elephant that is not in the room with us tonight, and, and I hope folks wake up to that. For a while, Chair Ludlow called me the lone wolf, and I remember coming in here for a long time, over and over saying that, you know, more and more, you're going to be hearing from the people, you're going to be hearing from the public. And that certainly happened regardless of how you view the issues. When I sat down, Tom Weaver, the Chair of Jennings Lodge, thanked me for, he termed it arranging evening meetings. I had some help there, but having evening meetings and having dialogue regardless of the outcome is, is the best thing that you've got going for you. It's not happening in Portland. You want a good laugh? I mean, it, you have to laugh, the street fee there, and how Portland is managing itself. It's fiscal lunacy, and we're seeing the fruits of that. And I remember a year, year and a half ago, people worrying that we were going to not follow Portland's lead over a fiscal cliff. So I, I do, I do thank the commissioners for having open dialogue, for letting people talk a little past their three minutes. I'll wrap up here. And certainly putting some things on the agenda that we probably wouldn't have seen in the past. This was one stiff, rigid, unresponsive place when I showed up here three and a half years ago. And there's been some tough times, but we've certainly got challenges, and we all need to move forward. I hope everyone has a good holiday break, I'm sure everyone needs it, and thanks for your time, as always.
Thank you, Les. You know, the thing you pointed out during the last, one of the last elections was the phrase, "Stop Portland Creep," so I decided to change that to "Stop Metro Creep." So anyway, Nancy.
Nancy Hall, Happy Valley. The prior board cut an agreement with the Eagle Landing developers to discount the transportation development fees. It's obvious this deal was tailored specifically to solely benefit Eagle Landing. This deal is soon to expire, but this board has it on life support. It's time to pull the plug. For over a year now, I have been calling for a new Eagle Landing traffic study because in the current study, the traffic counts are obsolete and the areas north of the site were omitted from the study. At last week's meeting, Commissioner Savas said there would be a new traffic study, and I thank him for remembering that as it was mentioned in past meetings. The question is, when will the new traffic study be executed? It appears that Eagle Landing isn't going to be required to submit a genuine traffic study prior to submitting their master plan. This is putting the cart before the horse. Isn't the size of a development based on what a traffic study determines area roads can handle? The proposed term sheet that this board is considering signing requires Eagle Landing to produce a master plan of at least 2 million square feet. How can this be a requirement without an authentic traffic study to back it up? Is this a Nancy Pelosi moment, we have to build the project to see if we can handle the traffic? If this board signs this agreement with Eagle Landing, no traffic study will be done. Eagle Landing will simply point to the agreement and say, "The county is requiring us to build 2 million square feet regardless of the findings of a new traffic study." Eagle Landing has been proceeding along based on a fraud of a traffic study, and someone needs the guts to do something about it. Are the citizens of the county going to get a true traffic study before any more Eagle Landing deals are signed? The developers want to acquire the Stevens Orchard Apartments. They are willing to put the purchase price of 2.4 million dollars into escrow. Then if they play their cards right and produce a master plan, get it approved, and get a few certificates of occupancy, they get their money back. Since this, since this developer has the ability to put the purchase price in escrow, they're also demonstrating they have the ability to purchase the property outright. Since this project is deemed to be such an economic engine, the developers should recoup their money in no time. No taxpayer money should be subsidizing the Eagle Landing development. Just like with the light rail boondoggle, the dog-eared playbook has been pulled out, and we are hearing the same talking point. The county is going to create jobs. It's not the government's job to create jobs. If you want to provide incentive for job growth, then cut taxes. We aren't against jobs or growth, we are against stupid growth, and Eagle Landing is stupid growth off the Richter scale. Stupid growth is bad enough, but the county is going beyond that by misusing taxpayer money to facilitate it. Stop the favoritism, stop subsidizing Eagle Landing.
Commissioner Savas?
Well, I wish Mr. McAllister was still here, but in a very similar, a very similar concern is in this Jennings Lodge issue that's before them, is that that traffic, traffic study will not happen until there's an application submitted, it will not be required until an application is submitted, and the same thing happens with, with Eagles Landing, okay? So with that said, is that master plan, you can't really have a traffic study unless you're studying what you're going to build, and that's where the master plan and the application come into play. Once that's established, then a, a traffic study has a scope, and they can study something without something, a master plan and application, there's no requirement.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, and I want to say, you know, there's a process for developments like this, and the process is the same for every developer. First, the developer throws something in, you know, like the Jennings Lodge situation, "Well, I want to build all these homes." And he kind of sees if it's going to, you know, if it's going to go or not. But the thing about these developments, they're always in a, in a stage of negotiation as far as density and so forth is concerned. I would agree with Mr. Savas that we can't establish a traffic plan, we can't calculate for cars if we don't know the size of the development. So this developer will have to pay for a brand-new traffic study, and in the traffic study, it's just not going to say there's going to be all these cars added, it's going to say, "How are we going to deal with all these cars? What infrastructure needs to be built to do this?" I would agree with you, government doesn't produce jobs, but I will say this, it's government's duty to get out of the way and allow people who make jobs to let them produce the jobs. That's what we're doing, we're getting government out of the way. I have been very consistent with that. We, in our strategic plan, our goal in five years is to have more, 10,000 more jobs in Clackamas County. We didn't say we were going to do it, we said we need to let our staff and people know that how to let other people through whatever applications they can do to have the jobs. So, thank you, Nancy.
I, Nancy, I, you know how I feel about this, I, you know, the developer will have to do a lot of roadwork as part of their requirements. But if a person thought about the 2.4 million dollars for Stevens Orchard's apartments alone, which is urban renewal money, which normally would go towards infrastructure, just that money alone is a drop in the bucket considering the problems that will come because of this development even off their campus. And, you know, if we're going to have money that is urban renewal money, that has before, before this been mentioned that it should be providing infrastructure, then that's what it should do. Forgiving $7 million of system development charges again sends a ripple effect through those entities who we've forgiven it from, and that specifically, we're talking about roadways. There's millions of dollars of problems that will come with this smart growth development. Regardless of what they do, it will not be enough to solve the new concerns created by it. Commissioner Savas?
Well, I think the difficulty is that when people watch these, watch these meetings and they hear different things from different commissioners, they become confused, and I think it's someone's responsibility to kind of lay out as much fact as possible. So one thing that's been left out of the dialogue has been that Happy Valley's a partner in that, and they will be, they will be the one that will be forgiving some of those transportation SECs, matter of fact, a good chunk of them. And it's also, I think, pretty established that when a developer, even in a small development, puts in something that they're required for something called half-street improvements, okay? And the law says basically, often in some of these situations, that they're only responsible for that. But if there's not a road, who builds the other half of the road? So it's kind of incumbent upon government to provide that infrastructure. In this case, I think there are, a lot of roads will be needed, and a lot of, and that traffic study will demonstrate that, and hopefully, that will be forthcoming, we'll have a better idea of the savings perhaps, or the, or the burden that the developer will carry by having to build these roads on his own.
Commissioner Smith?
Something else that needs to be realized here, this is a, this property is owned by a nonprofit organization that pays no property tax, and the property taxes that will be paid is $3 million a year just on the value of the properties. So I consider that fairly substantial. I got a letter, in fact, we all did, from a neighbor in the area, and I'm going to read it. I was going to wait till later, but now seems to be a good time. "As a property owner within one mile of the proposed Eagle Landing development, I own a home just off Stevens Way. I wanted you to know that myself and everyone I've spoken to in the neighborhood is absolutely thrilled about this proposed development. I have this, to have this infrastructure within walking distance of my home would be an amazing opportunity for me and my family. This would create a great meeting place and a landmark. I'm really looking forward to this development and am not at all concerned about the paranoia about traffic. Unfortunately, the negative voices are most often heard. I know that I represent many that are truly looking forward to this development. Sincerely, John Burnett." And as John mentioned, this is an urban renewal district, and there have been huge roadway improvements in the area that's not even beginning to get close to capacity. So years ago, the county could foresee that this could be an area of development, and they did use urban renewal dollars to create some new roadways in the area. So it's not as though this is without, but I just want to make sure that some of these points are clarified.
We should, you should note that not all of Eagle Landing is a church property or off the tax rolls, only a portion of it is.
Just one thing, please.
All right, go ahead, Nancy.
This is what I'm talking about, your proposed term sheet has it in there, that they have to have a master plan of 2 million square feet. If we have to wait to see if they can, you know, sub, build that, then why is it in here? It shouldn't be in here because you're, it's just like I say, they're going to say, "We had to build it." So it's before the traffic study, this should not come before the traffic study. You're saying they got to build it?
No.
Is what I'm saying, before the traffic, you're saying, "No, we're going, you're saying that if a traffic study says they can't build 2 million square feet, then they're not going to be able to build 2 million square feet, is that what you're telling me?"
Nancy, a traffic study isn't going to say that. The traffic study...
I'm just asking because I'm saying it's in here, I'm saying, is, are you going to wait for the traffic study to decide how big that development can be? That's what I'm asking.
That's what I'm asking.
No, because the traffic study is designed to predict how you would manage traffic if a 1 million-square-foot facility would come in play, and this is only Phase 1 at 1 million. Phase 2 would add another million at 2 million. So your traffic study, you ask the question of your study. You know, it's just not some, it's just not some generic traffic study. The traffic study will ask the question. In order to have 2 million square feet of space, what would our traffic needs and improvements be? That's how the traffic study-
Commissioner Bernard.
I wasn't going to say anything.
I noticed you were hesitating.
Actually, we can't possibly know what the traffic impact would be until we know what those thousands of square feet are. If it's a hospital, or a doctor's office, or a retail store, or a church, you can't, there's like a manual you look in and says, well, if you're going to have this hospital and you're going to have 2,000 employees, this will be the traffic impact. This is the car count. That's how you do traffic studies. So, I mean, the same issue in the Stafford area, you know, if we're looking at Borland, I mean, you don't do a traffic study until you know what you're going to do, or you've got nothing to compare it to. All that says is that before they get any benefits, they have to do a certain amount of development because frankly, we've been told this for years, probably 15, that something would occur, and it hasn't. So we said, you know, if you do it, you'll get a benefit. If you don't, don't come back to us.
Nancy, thank you. Les, thank you very much. On with the agenda we go. No more cards. So, it is time, Mr. Krupp, for a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our public hearing this evening is to consider the reading and adoption of a board order that would amend local contract review board rules, and I'm going to invite County Council Stephen Madkort to give you a presentation.
Thank you, Administrator.
Hold on just a second. Folks, if you'd exit the back door, it would really help us that, I appreciate it because that darn door makes a lot of noise on the airwaves, so thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner Stephen Madkort, County Council, here tonight to present an ordinance amending the county code, Appendix C, which is the local contract review board rules. What we are asking the board to approve is a basically temporary suspension of contract signing authority from December 22nd through January 8th, 2015, to allow the county administrator to sign all contracts in the board's absence. The board will not be holding any public hearings during that timeframe, and currently, the county administrator is restricted to contract signing authority up to $150,000. In the event a contract requires signature that would exceed that limit, this does provide the county administrator with authority to make such a contract. He would report back to the board at the soonest available time, and his authority would be suspended on January 9th, and it would resume to the board itself. We do this a couple times a year when the board takes recess.
All right. The commissioners have any clarifying questions of the county council?
Are we sure we really want to do that?
Yeah, well, you know, I was going to say, we've only known this guy a year, and we're going to give him millions of dollars.
We're throwing other millions around tonight, we might as well. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I have some cards up here.
Oh, no, those aren't-
Oh, wrong one. Forget that.
What was I going to say?
That's on a discussion item. When I see these cards, I get all excited. So, anyway, I'm opening the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak. Yeah, Les. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
My move, we read the board order by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Savis, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. I'll ask the clerk to read the board order by title only.
Okay. This is going to be Board Order 2014-122, in the matter of amending local contract review board rules, Appendix C of the Clackamas County Code.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the board order.
My move, we adopt the board order amending local contract review board rules, county code Appendix C, as presented in the board order.
Second.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye, passes 5-0. And now, Mr. Krupp, it is time for a discussion item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and this is going to be a great discussion item. It's one where we do have citizens who will be commenting. This is to consider a resolution that would support the reopening of Willamette Falls locks, and I'm going to invite Gary Schmidt, the Director of Public and Governmental Affairs, to give you a presentation and recommendation.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm Gary Schmidt, Public and Government Affairs, here this evening to seek your approval for a resolution supporting the reopening of the Willamette Falls locks. A brief history for you. The Willamette Falls locks opened on January 1st, 1873, 142 years ago in two weeks, and the locks bridged the upper and lower Willamette River. It was the first multi-lift navigational locks in the entire United States and remained the oldest continuously operating multi-lock system in the nation until unfortunately its closure in 2011. The locks has been owned and operated by the United States Army Corps of Engineers since 1915, and from 1915 until approximately the mid-1990s, fully funded the operation of the Willamette Falls locks. However, due to the over other, the almost 21 other locks and dams the Portland District of the Corps of Engineer operates in the state of Oregon, other dams and locks took priority, such as the Bonneville Locks and Dams, the John Day Locks and Dams, and several others. And because the Corps felt the amount of traffic going through the locks was not as high as those other dams, the funding was slowly reduced over time. However, our members of our congressional delegation had federal appropriations to supplement the Corps' budget to ensure the locks did stay open. Unfortunately, federal appropriation stopped in 2010. In 2006, Congresswoman Darlene Houli at the time persuaded Governor Kulengowski to form an Oregon Solutions Work Group to find ways to supplement the Corps budget to keep the locks operating and to fund maintenance activities. She was incredibly successful. Clackamas County and several other public and private agencies came together to supplement the Corps budget to keep the locks open. In 2009, Congressman Schrader helped secure a $2 million federal stimulus grant to repair the locks, which it needed at the time. Unfortunately, in 2011, the Corps of Engineers found that, due to excessive corrosion of the locks' gate anchors and a fear of operational failure that posed a safety risk to the public, the locks were closed indefinitely. They are currently in non-operational status. Now, why is the locks important to our region and our state? For several reasons: for economic development purposes, heritage purposes, tourism, recreation, transportation. For Clackamas County, it's important because we need the locks to transport the Canby ferry for its periodic maintenance from Canby to the Portland area, which we did recently. Despite the closure of the locks, the Corps did allow us to transport the ferry unmanned for legal purposes, but we did get it through to provide the repairs that were needed. Clackamas County has been very active in the efforts to maintain funding and to reopen the Willamette Falls locks, thanks to prior Board of Commissioners and you, county commissioners. The county is a member of the One Willamette River Coalition, which is a group of public and private entities that have been working together for the past six years to find ways to fund and reopen the locks. As well, the federal, our county's federal legislative agendas have included the Willamette Falls locks as a priority for funding, and as well, Clackamas County helped fund a recent survey which studied the Willamette Falls locks economic potential report. Now, you received an update on all of this information at a policy session on November 25th this year, and at that time, you directed staff to present a resolution to you tonight, which I'm doing right now, as well as support state legislation in the 2015 session, which will call for forming a statewide task force to study reopening and funding the Willamette Falls locks, as well as you agreed commissioners to convene a local work group of public and private entities to look at some short-term answers to fund and maintain the locks. Now, the resolution before you tonight is three pages, and I will not read it, but I'll quickly highlight the therefore clauses at the end, which you will be taking action on tonight, and that is, you are urging the Corps of Engineers to reopen the Willamette Falls locks. You are urging the Corps of Engineers to expedite the needed repairs and craft a plan for sustainable operation of the locks. You are asking that the Willamette Falls locks be added to the regional transportation plan, which it already has been, and ask the Metro Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, or JPACT, to include the locks as a federal priority. You are supporting the creation of a state task force, which I mentioned, and you are urging our federal congressional delegation to support the expedited repair and reopening of the Willamette Falls locks. So staff highly recommends that you approve this resolution. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I also believe there are members of the public here to testify.
Any clarifications or questions needed of the presenter?
Very good.
All right. This is a discussion item, a public discussion item, and so I have cards before me, and so I'll call you up in twos. Peggy Sigler and Sandy Carter, please.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Ludlow and Commissioners, I'm Peggy Sigler. Address is 9392 South Gribble Road outside of Canby in rural Clackamas County, and I am the Oregon Field Officer for the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and I just want to commend the Commissioners for the past probably more than two decades of Clackamas County who have been advocates for the, for keeping the locks open and have helped make that happen, and we've been working hard with the local group to help get this historic resource up and running again, and I appreciate your input and your support to help us move forward with that effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair Ludlow and Commissioners. I'm Sandy Carter. I live at 2555 Dillow Drive in West Lynn, and in 2002, Jerry Herman and I put Darlene Houli on his old boat and ran her through the locks in our first flotilla to try to draw attention to the fact that the Willamette Falls locks are there. They're fun, they're exciting, they're important to us. We started, I'm with Willamette Falls Heritage Foundation. We've been, I guess you could say, long-term advocates in this issue, and the county has stood with us. Gary Schmidt has done wonderful work with the advisory committee that I work with on this issue, and we're thrilled to have the support of the county and the county's involvement in the next phases of this as we try to move strategically towards solving this perennial issue of not having enough federal money because it doesn't fit the formula for log rafts and so forth. So, again, thank you very much for your support. Speaking for the other One Willamette River Coalition members and for the foundation board members, we're very grateful for you pass, if you pass this resolution tonight.
Thank you. Thank you both. Now, I have a card up here for the Honorable Former Congresswoman Darlene Houli, but I don't see her in the audience, but I see the, and I might as well call you honorable as well, Lisa NATO, former Multnomah County Commissioner, and I see that Annette Matson wants to take somebody's place and come up with us and with you and talk. Oh, that's not the case. She's with PGE, so, are you going to come up? Seriously? That's great stuff. I humiliated you into doing it, huh? Well, I think, you know, one of the things we're going to hear anyway is that PGE is a very important partner in this consideration, and let alone a very important partner in the redevelopment of Blue Heron, Oregon City, and so I want to say kudos, by the way, and what a great victory to obtain that permanent easement at an outlandishly wonderful price because I think it was Tom Peterson said free is a very good prize. But Lisa, you might as well start with you.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow and members of the Commission, and we appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. For the record, I'm Lisa NATO of Houli and NATO, and we're representing the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Congresswoman Houli sends her regrets this evening, but very much appreciates the work you are doing. As has been said by Gary, this is, the Willamette River and the locks are so important to our transportation, our economic development, and it's such a cultural and historical treasure. We just want to express our thanks in your actions tonight, the work you have taken over so many years, but taking this formal action and moving forward together with local partners, the state, to speak with one voice vis-à-vis the Corps of Engineers sends a really important message to the Corps, so thank you. I do want to acknowledge all the leadership over the years of Sandy Carter with One Willamette River Coalition and Peggy Sigler with the National Trust. They have laid the groundwork and just been working tirelessly on this, so we appreciate all they have done, and I do want to acknowledge as well the thoughtful, dedicated, and hard-working staff you have with Gary Schmidt. He has really done an excellent job, so we appreciate your leadership, and thank you for taking this action tonight.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, ma'am, did you submit a card and do we have all your information?
I did not, but I thought an invitation from the chair was sufficient.
Oh, what are you going to do?
For the record, my name is Annette Matson. I'm with Portland General Electric, where I work in government affairs. My business address is 121 Southwest Salmon in Portland, Oregon. There's nothing I can add to what has been said by the three incredible advocates for the locks ahead of me. PGE, as you know, is a longtime partner in this county. We've been doing business here for 125 years, and like so many other folks, value the locks, this irreplaceable historic asset, and see no reason why they should not be restored and preserved and here for all of us to enjoy, our children, our grandchildren, and assets like that, there's just nothing like it. So, we are, we have not officially released our legislative agenda at PGE, but I have been advocating that Senator Devlin's bill to form a task force to look at future ownership of the locks be added to PGE's legislative agenda also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this has been wonderful, and I certainly enjoy working on this project, and there's so much momentum and good thoughts about it, and I'm sure we'll be successful.
I'll ask for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move we approve the resolution supporting the reopening of the Willamette Falls locks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, we'll let Martha do it.
Let's let Martha.
Okay, so the motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader from far, far away. Commissioner Savis.
So I do have a question. Maybe someone can help me with this. Gary, on Tuesday, when we had our policy session, one of the items we discussed was the transportation plan, and inside there on some of the priority projects, this was on there for funding through Connect Oregon. And when I met with Lisa NATO and Darlene Houli, we both acknowledged, we had both, I had learned and they had recognized that there wasn't enough tonnage for it to apply for Connect Oregon, even though I had asked staff to look into that, so I see it still in the plan. Does that mean that we now feel that we can get funding through Connect Oregon funds or not?
Anything is possible. Thank you. My, I originally, because we discussed this, Commissioner, I originally counseled that because of that tonnage requirement, I felt that it may not be appropriate for that grant program, but I think that it is possible, depending on the advocacy of us and you commissioners, and working with the state and our legislators, so I would definitely say in the future applications, we give it a try and do our best, so it's not necessarily restricted automatically, but there's a chance that we could find funding through that source.
Commissioner Bernard.
So first off, I was surprised that the locks closed so quickly after the repairs were done, and I wonder if somebody checked on the warranty. The other discussion that I'd love to be involved in is, once you get the keys to unlock the locks, who's going to match, manage the locks in the future, and what kind of opportunities for tourism are available, you know, in the future? But, you know, the, I look forward to that discussion because that's a huge project for a county such as ours to take on, keeping the locks going. If we get, we get it repaired and the Corps of Engineers comes in, it's going to require a whole bunch of partners to keep that lock, those locks going.
Commissioner Smith.
In our meetings, that's one of the things that have come up. We're trying to establish an ownership structure, is that what we want to call it? Maybe a nonprofit. It wouldn't be solely operated by the county or the state. We're looking at a nonprofit organization created, but whatever we do, we have learned that the Corps of Engineers still will have regulatory oversight on it since it is a river. So that's something that's still being worked out. Do you want to add anything, Lisa?
I would just say that we don't know what the possible solutions might be, and that's why we have the working group, and we appreciate your leading that to discuss what the local community wants to do, and as well as having a statewide task force to really take on this issue and find a sustainable plan for operations and getting the repairs done in the first place.
So Commissioner Schrader, it is 3:50 a.m., and I'm sure you're nursing-
we were going to have a lot of folks from, from the area tonight testifying, so I knew it was important for me to be here. And yes, I'm on my second pot of tea as we speak.
All right. You know, there is a great opportunity here in the totality of things for a metamorphosis of that entire river area. If you think about Blue Heron, Oregon City, if you think about the locks, if you think about the area on the other side of the river owned by PGE, which by the way, I'm not shy of saying to PGE that they, you know, the view from Oregon City is of this mill, and if this all comes to being, they should paint it in a Tuscany style so that it would fit into whatever we're doing on this side of the river. But also you take into consideration West Lynn's plan for a complete change of the Crown Zellerback area, and you look at that and you think of what the possibilities could be for, for really a great upper river happening. A complete change, a draw for tourists, a historical element, and certainly operating locks to give opportunity to people to recreate upriver and businesses to be created and then thrive upriver. I think there's great possibilities here. As Jim said, we've always been concerned about this, and certainly, certainly that previous commissioners thought the same thing. It's one thing to fix it, and I think it was mentioned by Commissioner Schmidt now. I think it was mentioned by Mr. Schmidt, you know, it's one thing to repair, it's another thing to sustain it. And that's one of the big concerns I know has been addressed on, on the committees that have been created to oversee this. But, excuse me, I think this is a great possibility, and I think we're all behind it, and I know that we'll be lobbying when we go back to DC this March to try to press some buttons and hopefully see some money flow in to help us preserve those wonderful locks. So ladies and gentlemen, unless there's any further clarifications or questions, we're about ready to call for the poll. All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Pass is five zero. Thank you, ladies. Thank you, everybody who showed up. And now, which everybody waits on bated breath for every week, it's time for the county administrator update.
No.
Is that?
Oh, darn it.
All that preamble.
And the Daves have been waiting here a long time.
It's a little premature, but.
That's one I want to pull.
Our, our double Daves, two Daves from the Technical Services Department are now going to be called up for it because Commissioner Bernard is going to call them on the carpet. No, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of a construction contract change order with TS Gray Construction for the rehabilitation for the historic Francis Ermat-Injure House Project in Oregon City. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County for data analysis services. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Damascus for services performed by the Department of Transportation and Development. Under the Department of Technology Services, approval to enter into a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement for Software and Licensing for Dale Software. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Damascus for GIS mapping and data services. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Business and Community Services Office, approval of Amendment Number Two to the Contract with Total Golf Management Services for management services for the operation of Stone Creek Golf Course. Approval of a Contract with Columbia Vista for the Boulder 2014 Timber Sale. Under the Clackamas County Enhanced Law Enforcement District, we have a resolution for an enhanced law enforcement district supplemental budget less than 10% for fiscal year 2014-2015. And Water Environment Services Authorization to Execute a Funding Agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Portland General Electric Company for the Carley Creek Water Quality Enhancement Project. And that concludes the last consent agenda of 2014.
Indeed, it is. Do the commissioners want to pull any items? The threat was out. I don't know if he's going to follow through. Oh, he's tempted. All right, we'll ask for a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that. All right, motion made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Savis. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that the Daves have waited patiently. It's a, and, you know, our software is really old, and, and this, we can finally free the squirrels that have been kept in the back of that machine.
I, I think this is past their bedtime, I'm pretty sure of that, but we'll hold them in there for a little while longer. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Well, I blew it, so might as well just have the county administrator update.
All right. So I just have a couple of quick items. One is I wanted to speak back to an item you just approved on your consent agenda, the approval of the contract for Total Golf Management Services for the Stone Creek Golf Course. Just kind of wanted to let you know that in fiscal year 1213, we had a net revenue of $158,000 at the golf course. That doubled last fiscal year to about $315,000, and now with the, the retirement of the debt for the golf course, we're expecting to have a net revenue of about $600,000 in the course of this year and future fiscal year. So that's good news. The second item I wanted to share with you is just an invitation to the public. On Monday, January 5th at 5:30 p.m. right here in this room, we will have a swearing-in ceremony for newly-elected county officials. These will include Commissioners Jim Bernard and Paul Savis, County Treasurer Sherry Anderson, and County Clerk Sherry Hall. And so then finally what I want to do, because this is the last board meeting of the year, I just want to wish you all the happiest of holidays, a Merry Christmas, and a prosperous new year. We've got a lot of work ahead of ourselves in the year that comes ahead, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. It is now time for Commissioners' communication in the interest of time, and now what time it is in Great Britain, I'll recognize Commissioner Schrader first.
Well, thank you all. I am going to go head up and, and try and catch up on some sleep, and I want to end by saying Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year. It's been a pleasure working with you in 2014, and I am looking forward to a really wonderful and prosperous and fun 2015 together. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Here's the news from Great Britain. Take care, everyone. Bye-bye.
Goodbye, Martha. Thank you for joining us.
Well, that's got to be the one of the shortest of.
I thought she was going to go on and on. You said you were leaving, Martha.
I thought you hung up.
I'm about to die. Bye-bye.
I don't trust her that she really did this time. So I'm going to start with Commissioner Bernard.
I don't have a, I went to the Community Corrections Commission meeting today. You know, there's a lot of discussion about funding corrections, funding next year. There are some opportunities with the Justice Reinvestment Grant to try some innovative programs to reduce the number of people we send to prison. And we have a committee, the Lipsec, that's the Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee, I think. That will be looking at how to spend those grant dollars. There's $58 million that we go into the counties, and hopefully we can reduce the number of people who go to prison. As long as we do that, and we don't have to build a prison, that money will continue to come. And so far, I believe there were 1,032 people who were released into a short-term facility like our Community Corrections Facility. Thirty-five have returned, only thirty-five out of the over 1,000, and ten of the, I think thirty of those were very short for some minor infraction, and five committed a new crime. So it's really working out well. The program's really working out well, so I hope we'll continue to do that. While the Community Corrections funding continues to remain fairly flat, we talked a lot about the challenges of small communities such as Harney County, which often the parole officer is also the chief of police, and can spend half his day driving someone to get treatment in another county. So it's really challenging in small counties, actually Harney's a huge county, counties with a small population. But it was very interesting, and I, I, every meeting I go to, I learn from Chris Hoy and some of the other members of the commission about the fine work they're doing, and I think that Clackamas County's investment in Community Corrections is really paying off.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir.
Enjoyed working with you this year.
Commissioner Savis?
I just wanted to kind of give an update last week, but I had to take off for another meeting, which was exciting. But I did want to just talk about, a little bit about the, some of the events mainly at MPAC and JPAC on that Wednesday evening and, and subsequent Thursday morning in regard to a long process that Metro coined the phrase of climate smart. And ultimately, we couldn't support the plan as submitted. I felt, and I think our board felt that perhaps by some of the transportation preferences and the way they were weighted, didn't frankly match or meet what maybe some of the national and other national agencies such as the Federal Highway Authority, Department of Transportation Engineers, ASHTO, and others. And so what I proposed, and fortunately my colleagues here, all five, all four of my colleagues, five of us, okayed on Tuesday, developing our own cart, what I'm going to call our carbon compliance strategy, knowing that carbon pricing's up the pike by both federal, federal law and soon-to-be state, even though it's somewhat in place and the state, statewide, things that are going to be coming down. I think Metro approved that today around 2 o'clock, or shortly after 2 o'clock, they approved the climate smart, as I understand. And I, you know, the, our concern, of course, with that is that, you know, roads and highways and local streets and some of our safety needs are given the fair weighting that they duly deserve, and that whatever benefits they create ought to be recognized when it comes to any carbon reduction as a, as they so call it. So I'm pleased about that, that we're going to be moving forward with our own. I do want to, I'm going to be brief because it's so late in the hour, but I want to, do want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and, and a Happy New Year, and that everyone have a safe and pleasant holiday season, and look forward to a brighter new year.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. I'm going to be brief as well. I'm looking forward to the holidays with family. We always have a big to-do on both sides of the family, my husband's and mine, and it's like marathon christmassing. And then the day after Christmas, we're going to the beach, and I'm going to crash for a while. So Merry Christmas to all my commissioners and everybody listening.
Thank you. Well, I think it's appropriate, certainly, I wish everybody a wonderful New Year and a Merry Christmas. We've had a very productive year as a commission again, and I want to also thank our outstanding staff and the Commissioners' office and basically in that area, but specifically it's great to have Mr. Kupp here, Mary Rathke, our two deputies, but specifically, you know, there's the front office staff too. We have Caroline Hill up there, and our five policy coordinators who are integral to the success that we enjoy and therefore integral to this county. Those are Emily Klepper, Mary Jill Cartesania, I got it right, Kimberly DeSantos, Drenda Howitt, and now the newest one, Ernie Hayes, who will be my policy coordinator. So congratulations to them also for an outstanding year. You know, I sent out a letter to the employees today on behalf of the commission, but it is one of my favorite phrases, and let me just point you towards that and encourage you therefore, but one of my favorite phrases is from Leo Biscaglia, and it really rings true this time of year. He said, "Too often, we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around." So during these holiday seasons, folks, go out and spread joy, give those thank-yous and those I-love-yous where they are due, and we'll all enjoy a better and more prosperous future. There being no further business before the commission this day, ladies and gentlemen, whoopee, it's the end of the year. This meeting is adjourned.